Everyone, thank you for coming out. We're gonna wait for Councilwoman Woodbury, just right there. We're gonna go ahead and start. So just give us two or three minutes. Thank you. I see her. She's coming. Good evening, and welcome to the July 25th, 2023 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate Item I for matters that are germane to City Council if the item you wish to speak to is not on the agenda. We have a light system, which is three minutes. After stating your name and address, the green light will appear. After two minutes, the yellow light will appear. After three minutes, you will see a red light that will appear. At that time, we ask that you take your seat. Written remarks may be handed to the city clerk to be made a part of the record. The City Code identifies the procedure for participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address City Council on matters that are germane to council. Matters that are germane to council mean matters that the City Council by law is in power to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, organization, or campaign information. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of this ordinance. At this time, we ask that you please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Pastor Halliday with Mana Church will provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Ely will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. It is the practice of council members to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome but are under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
First and foremost, Mayor Jones, just on behalf of Mana Church, want to say what a privilege it is to serve this city as council members and all of its citizens. Where you get to partner with a nonprofit called 757 Community Fridges, and we are gonna host the first community fridge on the peninsula, opening tomorrow. So with that being said, let's pray together. Father, we're just thankful for the roles and the offices that you've called these amazing leaders to, and we just want to invite your presence here tonight. Would you be in this meeting as you deposited a vision, you've downloaded strategy upon this council to truly make the city of Newport News an all-American city? And so we know that the weight of government rests on your shoulders, so we want to ask that you just give us the same heartbeat to work together, to collaborate, and in that process of ironing, sharpening iron, let us get to that common goal. So God, we thank you for what you're doing in and through this team. It's in your mighty name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public hearings. Page three. Item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to make offers to acquire by voluntary sale or condemnation parcels for the Governor Drive Stabilization Project. This project plans to restore approximately 770 linear feet of stream channel on a portion of Flax Mill Creek between Governor Drive and Riverview Farm Park, which is eroding. In addition to the stream restoration, the design will also incorporate a stormwater management facility. Governor Drive Stream Restoration and BMP have been developed and require easement acquisitions along E-Governor Drive. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Some move.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Page thirteen. Item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute the First Amendment to tower attachment lease by and between the city of Newport News, Virginia, and Spock Inc., formerly USA Mobility Wireless Inc., for the ground air transmission site located at 100 Tower Lane, Yorktown, Virginia. The First Amendment will extend the lease for a five-year period from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2028. Rent will begin at $18,287.27 per annum and will continue to be increased annually by an amount equal to 3% of the rent for the prior year. All other terms and conditions of the original lease shall remain in full force and effect. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some, seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move adoption.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Consent agenda. Item F contains the following items. Page 21, minutes of the work session of June 27, 2023. Page 48, minutes of the regular meeting of June 27, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Items F1 and F2, all-inclusive. Is there a second? Moved and seconded, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Next on our agenda, other City Council actions. Page 91, Item G1, Mr. Archer.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Item G1 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending and re-ordaining City Code, Chapter 29, Parks, Squares, and Recreational Facilities, Article 2, general regulations governing parks, squares, beaches, golf courses, etc. Section 29-28, operating or parking vehicles in recreational facilities generally, and Section 29-31, washing, repairing, or servicing vehicles. I recommend approval of the ordinance.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Some moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Page 94, Item G2, Mr. Archer.
Item G2 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a temporary, non-exclusive, revocable license agreement by and between the city of Newport News, Virginia, and Metro Fiber Networks Incorporated. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Are there any speakers at this time?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
And Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you. Page 116, Item G3, Mr. Archer.
Item G3 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the conveyance of a 1.168-acre city-owned property at Tech Center Parkway to the Economic Development Authority of the city of Newport News, Virginia. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Some.
Second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Appropriations. Page 123, Appropriations. Item H, Mr. Archer.
Item H1 is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $750,000 from the Community Development category of the fiscal year 23 bond authorization, $1,630,660 from the fiscal year 2019 City Center at Worcester Point Parking Garage and related infrastructure improvements bond authorization, and appropriating $1,319,340 of excess funding from the completed Pearl Way Parking Garage for a total funding of $3,700,000 for the Tech Center Research Park. I recommend approval of the appropriation.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve Item H1? Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? And I know we have some discussion from Councilwoman Vick.
Well, the only thing, is there anybody here that can give us a little bit idea of what the improvements of the Tech Center would include?
Yes.
Of the Tech Center placemaking and amenity?
Yes, I would ask at this time if Florence Kingston, our Director of Development, could come forward and share remarks and comments with the council at this time.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Good evening. The improvements, the public improvements will be in the area between the two roads. It's gonna include a bandshell, the developers putting in public art, seating area, and all that's consistent with the buildings around to activate that central area for opportunity for events and collisions from the business community. The developer is also committing a million dollars. They're gonna put restrooms in the ends of certain buildings so we don't have to have temporary restrooms out when we're doing events. So it's a seating area, outdoor connections, pedestrian connections, crossing the roads, and a bandshell for, and power for us to be able to not have to have generators to create events there.
Oh, good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion at this time? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Citizen comments. Item I, citizen comments on matters germane to City Council. I will call each name in the order that it appears in front of me. Ms. Akima Love?
I was hoping not to be first today. Still trying to, how's everybody?
We're good, thank you.
I missed you guys, I know you miss me.
I said, I feel like I need to get up and salute.
Don't, don't do that, don't do that, God is watching. Okay, thank you. I got so many compliments today. This represents, Sunday is every day, in other words, don't wait to go to church on Sunday, go to God every day. Purple is your favorite color?
It is.
Uh, we're planning on September 19th. Anybody knows what September 19th is? Anybody? Oh, we gotta do something about this. Anyhow, someone's birthday is September 19th.
It's my birthday.
His birthday, yes. And we're gonna be officially launching Paint the Town Pentecostal Purple. We are calling for the churches to open their doors 24/7, and of course, I'm not gonna go through the agenda because we only have three minutes. One of the things we're gonna be doing is gunning for souls in preparation for going back to school. We did something before the end of the year. The students hanging out at McDonald's, you know, with no guidance, you know, stuff happened, so somehow we got started doing a Bible trivia. And to my surprise, the young people participated. And one young man, 16, went back to church as a result, okay? We had trivia questions, like the first person that brings a Bible to school, you know, who can answer these questions? And they went on their phones and their computers. So when people say these young people don't want us because we don't know how to reach them, it's not their fault. So it's called gunning for souls. If you can run up into school with guns and take lives, we can run up into school with the gospel, you know, and save lives. So more on that. The third point is, I do a homeless street paper, and I've actually been off the street for two months getting rest, not a vacation. I need a vacation, anybody wanna sponsor?
Okay.
I need a vacation. It's called Stone Love, after the Supreme's Stone Love. The lyrics are in here, and this is for, I only have one copy left. Thank you. It's yours truly. And along with that comes the purple ribbons. We got purple Pentecostal prayer ribbons, everybody gotta say that five times fast, not now, and without error. Because this is a campaign, we have to do something, and we have to do it in love. You know, everything that we're doing is based on the love of God. We might wanna scream, might wanna punch somebody in the nose every now and then, but we gotta keep the focus on love. It's not easy for any of us. If it is, raise your hand, please, we'd like to talk to you. Okay, so anyway, the paper's called Stone Love. We would like to work with Four Oaks, possibly getting a copier, printer, they already have a computer lab. The director has been willing to start making some copies, and I went out the other day, and I was able to make over $100 in just a couple hours, so we can take those signs down, don't give money to panhandlers, and we can do a documentary or something else. She just, she really likes me, she's laughing everything I'm saying, okay? And...
I think you're wonderful.
Yeah, well, you can thank God for that, I can't take any credit. If you don't wanna see the other side of me, he's working with me, okay? So...
Just for, just for time, we're gonna, it's red.
Okay, wrap it up, okay? So those are the three items. Paint the Town Pentecostal Purple on what day?
September 19th.
Uh-uh, uh-uh, louder. September 19th. Anyone that does not know, last strings, okay? And this is all about love, bringing people together so they can implement their ideas and visions, young people, old people, male, female, black, white, this, that, whatever, okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
That's God's idea. And thank you so much, and great to see you guys, miss you all.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon. Oh, can I leave this with you? Uh, this is a flower, these are flowers?
It's beautiful, can I?
And the basket is actually to take up a collection.
We'll take, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Lily Robinson?
Hi, good evening.
How you doing, ma'am?
My name is Lily Robinson, and I finally got keys to the lift and ride. And I come here tonight, first of all, I'm thanking God. I'm really truly thanking God, and so it's been a long struggle. I came here in 2022 behind a parade, but it was more than parade in my life and stuff that I've been dealing with Newport News redevelopment housing authority. Now, I wanna appreciate you, Mayor Jones, because you and Phyllis got me hurt.
It's all, it's all Phyllis, it's not me. She's the best, Phyllis is the best.
I ain't messing with you, I'm talking about these ladies. I'm talking about Karen Wilds, Teresa Bennett, Ms. Artis, Ms. Francis, Jennifer Bookbridge, what you calling everything? And the two ladies standing there, and everybody since I've been coming to here, and my mayor, I mean my police too, because I'm gonna need him there, he's gonna have to come out there to that lift and ride. I found out God gave me a reason that I had to get in there, but first of all, I wanna finish up with housing. I wanna, first of all, thank my pastor, Miracle Temple, my first lady and stuff, my family and the neighbors and stuff, that know I'm coming over here talking to y'all about what's going on. Y'all got new beautiful buildings in there, and I'm in it, but they got issues, and they gonna need y'all help, because it does not belong to housing, it's the rise and lift and rise. These people have moved in here built for us because housing couldn't. And I wanna tell y'all right now, this incident, I only got three things to say, y'all, first this is my keys and stuff. Second of all, I only got three things. First of all, I need to let y'all know, on my last day, not my last day, before I moved in there, on July the 9th, in Jefferson Bookbridge, where I've been staying at in the back of a church, that I've been dealing with Karen Wilds and all them, on the July 9th, that Sunday morning, I got up to take my shower like I normally do for church and stuff, and this particular Sunday, I fell. I fell in the tub and stuff, okay, hit my back and everything. I had to crawl out, now you know I got a stub, and I got my knees were bleeding. So when I crawled out to shower and everything, I put down towels and stuff, so I was switching over everything. I pulled the cord in my bathroom, the emergency cord, to show outside the light for the fire department, everybody to come? Pulled it twice, didn't work. I got mad. I sit there, I started crying for a minute, I said, Anne, get it together, you gotta get out here for church. The one in your bedroom worked, because Karen Wilds them sit and made them do it. When I moved in there, the Wilds was hanging out. The following week, Hood came in there, they were hanging out. Three weeks later, I got Karen Wilds office, and Ms. Bennett them, they had them come in there fixing. I told y'all the story about me coming from Piglet Winkley, and it was fixed.
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's red, so just wrap it up and we'll...
I'm gonna wrap it up.
I appreciate you.
Yes, and stuff, but I want all them to know what happened to me. I crawled out that bathroom, knowing and stuff, that cord in my bedroom was working. I got to my bedroom and pulled that cord, and this is what I got, the whole cord. That didn't even work, that's the one they fixed up.
Okay.
For a year, I've been living like that and stuff.
I'll come, I'll come, I'll come talk to you right after, okay?
Okay, and I need y'all and stuff, because y'all gonna need help out here.
Okay.
We gonna have to call on them, Senators, Robert Scott, all them, they gonna have to put some money in this community.
I'll call them, I'll call them tonight, okay? I got you, I got you, ma'am. I'll talk to you afterwards.
I need y'all to know this, because you know I've been coming over here and everything. They put my life in danger for a whole year, a whole year, when I needed them and stuff, and I fell elderly, and crawling out there and everything.
Okay, we'll talk, we'll come right after, I promise, okay?
And I need to tell you about the lift and rise and stuff.
Okay.
I mean, I need to tell y'all, Mayor Jones, y'all have blessed me and helped me and everything, but we talking about the all these other people that ain't got the help.
I got you.
We need Hood to come down here to investigate it and order.
Okay.
We need all this, we need somebody to go over there to lift and rise, because they need help and put money in there and everything.
Okay.
But what they building and everything, the stuff is in there.
If you go, Mr. Freeman, he'll come, we'll, I'll talk to you right after, okay?
All right, but I'm coming back, I'm gonna keep coming back.
I want you to come back every week.
Let me tell you this and stuff, before I go, you can't cut me off.
I, you got it.
I sure heard you on the TV about the mold in City Hall and moving it to City Center.
Uh-huh.
No, honey, because number one, we been waiting too long for a good man like you, and we're not moving it, they can fix it up like they do, well, don't do it, we got molds and stuff.
I hear you.
I'll tell you, your mold in that City Hall, for all that rest and festation.
I hear you, ma'am.
And all that stuff.
Yes, ma'am, I hear you.
You know what I mean?
I got you, just give me a few minutes, I'll come talk to you.
Wait a minute, let me tell you this last part.
Okay, last, last one.
We would like, we would like for you to come to our first parade again this year that we haven't, that we didn't get last year. I want them to know.
We're all, all of council will be at, at the Southeast Parade, for the most part, I think, yes.
Okay, all y'all will be there? I want y'all there.
Thank you, ma'am, thank...
You too, Tina, I called you today, because I want you to come see me over at the lift and ride, so I can let you know.
You're good, ma'am, you're good.
All right, then, I'm gonna leave my comments, please, because you bring good to me, and I'm gonna wait for you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. David, don't forget your keys.
Oh, I won't never forget them.
I got you. Thank you.
Them other keys that Jennifer Bookbridge and stuff, all right, y'all be blessed, but I'm coming back, because I got what I need, what I need for all of us here.
Got you, thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Ms. Sharon Scott? That's you, yes, ma'am.
Greetings, everyone.
Greetings.
The Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor...
The Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, it's good to be here. Thank you all for giving me a moment to speak. I live at two five two St. Constance Drive. I just wanted to come by and do two things, just to thank you for your service, but also just to talk a little bit about some of the concerns that the citizens are sharing with me. For some reason, they still think I'm Councilwoman Scott, representing the North District. So, Mr. Bethany, I'm going to need your help, and Mr. Harris. There are some vehicle abandonment issues, and I, I will get with you and do a sidebar, but I did, she was supposed to be here with me tonight. So there are some things we need to talk about, about abandoned vehicles and trash in the yard and some of the things. I know that when I was here, we implemented that community maintenance program. So perhaps when we go out and do a sweep on the community maintenance program, maybe we can look at those abandoned vehicle issues. I mean, because it's not difficult to see a car standing on the side of the road with flat tires. It's not difficult to see a car that's rusted, look like it's never been moved. Those aren't things that are difficult to see, so I hope that we can do something about that. And also, I'm not sure whether you all have considered the North District Town Hall meetings, and citizens really did enjoy those for twenty-something years, and they're asking if anybody's interested in coming back to do those meetings. So if you don't want to, I understand, and, and I can probably work out something with the city department heads, because that was, they live, you know, the North District. Y'all know if you live in the North, it's far, and people don't drive here, especially some of our senior citizens who are my age and above. They don't drive at night, and they don't want to drive this far. So if you all will give that some consideration, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
And also, Ms. Scott, we're doing, I can't speak to the council members, but we're going to do three mayor town halls in the next three months, in the, in the South, in the Central, and the North. So I, I will talk to, to them, but I know some of the council members can also do it. So we, we will get up there, I promise. And talking to Councilwoman Woodbury, we're going to, not, we're not moving meetings, but we're going to rotate meetings. Let us work the cadence, but I agree, we're trying to be fair to everyone. So thank you for coming down.
Well, if I could get a flyer or something, you know, sent through me, or something that I can send out to some of my contacts.
Of course.
Because everybody is not on Newport News now. I still encourage them, even though I don't go and see it every day, but I encourage others to join it as well. So if you could do that, I would, I would greatly appreciate it.
Will do. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Our next item is new business. So what we'll do is, we'll go city manager, city attorney, city clerk, and then I think we have a few motions. Mr. Archer?
No business to report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. City attorney?
Nothing, sir.
City clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Yep.
I, I have a motion, move to adopt an ordinance authorizing the execution by the mayor of that certain separation severance agreement between the city of Newport News and Cindy Rolfe, city manager, effective July twenty-fifth, and the ordinance is attached to this motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Very reluctantly, yes. Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
I got a second motion.
Yep.
Move to adopt a resolution authorizing appointment of acting city manager Allen, and granting said, said acting city manager temporary additional compensation. A copy of that resolution is attached.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you. We're going to go back up the list. Mr. Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I want to thank you for your confidence and support in my abilities to execute the duties of acting city manager. And secondly, on behalf of the city administration, I would be remiss if I did not briefly take this opportunity to thank Cindy Rolfe for her fifteen years of dedicated service to the city, under thirty-seven years of service in local government. Cindy, best wishes to you and your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City attorney? City clerk? We'll start in the, the regular order. Councilman Ely?
I would like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. I also like to thank Cindy for all the great things she did for Newport News, especially leading the CNI grant and leading other initiatives throughout the city of Newport News. I also like to thank Florence and the city staff for the amazing presentation they put on to us today, giving us information on how we move Newport News forward, especially in the East End area. I also like to let the city know that I am doing a back-to-school event on August the twelfth at the Town Bank Field from twelve to four, who will have free food, food trucks, face painting, bounce houses, and other fun activities for children. So come on out. That's August the fourth, August the twelfth from eleven, from twelve to four. Thank you so much. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Harris?
Yes, and I also want to acknowledge and thank Ms. Cindy Rolfe for her years of service, serving in the position of city manager for six out of my seven years on council and doing what she did through the pandemic and helping us along the way in, in CNI grants and some of the other things she was able to help accomplish, and look forward to moving forward with Mr. Archer and continuing doing some of the great things that we have in the works. Recognitions want to go out, are going to go out to a group in the North District called the Hampton Roads Hurricanes Track Club. They recently went down to Orlando, Florida. It was twenty-seven young people from the North District and some beyond that went down and participated in the national track meet, and out of those kids, they had fourteen and maybe fifteen that were certified as All-Americans here in our North District. So as we continue on our theme with the champion, Newport News is a city of champions, well, we have some more champions in our community with the North District, in the North District, the Hampton Roads Hurricanes Track Club. They're led by President Ashley Kent and her husband, one of the head coaches, Mr. Harrison Kent, and we thank them for all that they do with that group of young people that they work with on a daily basis. Good to see Councilwoman Scott here, because she kind of touched on something that we're going to start up in September. We're going to resume our Councilman Corner, which we'll be doing, and we did prior to the pandemic and kind of making us shift how we do things. But we're going to resume that in September. So in the North District, I'll be coming by to some of our small businesses, and we'll resume how we did it before in getting some information out, is welcoming questions, comments, and highlighting our small businesses in our community. We're looking forward to getting back to doing that in September. And that's all I have, Mayor Jones.
Thank you. Councilman Long?
I also want to thank everyone for coming out tonight to participate in this meeting. I also want to thank Cindy for her service to the city, and I just wish her well wishes going forward. Last council meeting, we had a discussion on a group shelter with, with the homeless. After that meeting, we decided to create a conversation about homelessness that will occur August the twenty-second. It's going to be at the Midtown Community Center at six o'clock. This will be an opportunity for the community to hear about the services that are being provided, the current state of, of the unhoused population in the city. And then also, we'll have an opportunity for citizens to make comments, to express their concerns, to express their interest of how we as a community are going to work with our unhoused population, because it's a real thing that we, that we see here, and there's issues on both sides, dealing with the house, with the homeless, but we as a community need to figure out what's the best solution for us moving forward, and that's why it's called a conversation about homelessness. And then the following will be, the next step will be announced and talk about some of the steps. We're going to take some of those comments, and we're going to roll it up into actually study, and we're going to look at how we actually can address it, but we need the, we need comments from our citizens to talk about how we want to address this, because we as a, we got to figure out how we all can live together cohesively as a community. So hopefully, you'll have an opportunity to come out. That'll be August twenty-second at six PM at the Midtown Community Center. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vick?
Yes, I would like to invite everyone to, my, I have a nonprofit, Women's Empowerment Development Incorporated, but I would like to invite everyone to, this is our first Fit Fab and Finance Wellness Expo on Saturday, August the fifth, and it will be in two parts. We'll be at King Lincoln Park, starting out there with a lot of fitness with our Intense Fire Candice Alexander, and that will start at eight AM. We'll be at King Lincoln Park from eight AM to one thirty. And then the second part, we will be at Down and Gross Cultural Arts Center, and that's going to be led by the Dunamus Christian Center Choir. And this event will focus on the six areas of wellness that we identified, finance, physical wellness, mental wellness, spiritual wellness, occupational wellness, as well as fabulous wellness. So come on out, wear your exercise gear. If you want to get walking, we will have at King Lincoln Park our one nautical fabulous mile walk run. So come out and have a good time. We'll have a DJ music and some nutritious food. If you need more information, contact me, please. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Woodbury?
Yes, I voted tonight, and I preempted my vote by saying reluctantly, because we have lost the best city manager that I think, and I've served under five of them, she was the best city manager. And I've talked to people who've been here forty years in the city, and they said the same thing. I can't tell you what a loss this is for our community and how I feel our city will move backwards a great deal now. I do not support, I did not, and I, I still don't, having to let her go, let her resign. We are very grateful to her. She has remade the Southeast community with the thirty million dollars she got, and she did, she was in charge of that from the CNI grant, and she took it on. We got refused the first, it's only two in the country. She was refused the first time, and she rewrote it and got the grant, one of two, as I said. We have lost such a giant of a city manager, and I frankly grieve for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor?
I'd like to thank Cindy for all that she's done for the city, and I look forward to working with you, Mr. Archer, during this transition. We have full faith in you being able to help us, you know, take Newport News to the next level. So we appreciate you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Archer.
Good?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you all for, for coming tonight. I appreciate, one, I want to speak about, what I'm excited about is council as a whole, we, we move toward broadcasting work sessions. I know there was a lot of discussion last year, and honestly, a lot of discussion over the past four or five years about that. I think it's something that's going to add another dimension and depth to the city. Councilwoman Sharon Scott talked about how, how long it took to get down here, and I know that it's very, very hard to get down here at four thirty, and so, like I said, in work session, which I'm sure everyone sort of already heard, it's very hard to get down here at four thirty, and there are some pros and cons to recording work sessions. One of the cons is that you're going to see sort of what happens behind the scenes. You're going to see that there is disagreements. You're going to see that there's arguments and discussions, whether it's about some personnel or about the future of the city. I know in two weeks, we're going to have a really frank conversation about the CIP, about what is the vision for the city, about the downtown plan. And before, that's usually done, we do it in a work session, which have already, they're always, people can come and take videos, but now we're going to basically air everything out. So, so give us, give us some time, we would, all of us on council, and not just a, it's not, it's not a Mayor Jones thing. It's everyone on council wants it to be more visible, and so as we sort of go open kimono to everything, just give us some time, but we are trying to move in that direction. The second thing I have, I wanted to speak to everyone's comments. I want to thank Cindy for, for all of her years of service. I, I agree with, with Councilman Woodbury and the fact that she, she is a giant, and she has laid a very, very strong foundation for the city. In this interim capacity, Mr. Archer, I'm excited for you to continue to lead on, and I have full faith and confidence in each and every department head, even the ones that tell me to wear a different tie, Cleeter, and to say my, my tie is too short or too long, but I, I have full confidence and ability in everyone at the city as we, as we maneuver this transition. I, I have full comments that we prepared written comments for afterwards, and I'll, I'll leave those remarks for a la, a later time. I want to, I want to close with, the past couple of days, I was in New York at Bloomberg Program for Mayors, and I mention it because in the audience, we have, for the first time ever, at Newport News, we have a chief innovation officer. Sir, could you just stand up? Just give a wave? Thank you. And it's, I think we're one of the first in the area, and I, I want to say in the state to have a CIO. It was important, not just for me, but for all of us to have a CIO, because that is the way that local government and business is moving, is how can we innovate, how can we, we do things in a, in a, in a better, in a more efficient manner. The program itself, we're going to have the opportunity to send two senior staff members to New York to get some learning and bring it back. Additionally, we're going to have the opportunity for basically a half a million dollar, it would cost the city about half a million dollars. We're going to get it for free to have six or seven Bloomberg trained consultants that are going to fly down, and then we're going to send a team for free to New York. They can solve a complex issue. I'm sure we can talk about it offline, but ideally, I would love to sort of solve and crack the nut on downtown Newport News, over town, however you want to call it. The future of Newport News is in downtown. It's at the intersection of the public, the private, the navy, the shipyard, parking. The future of Newport News is in downtown, and for some reason, we haven't been able to crack it due to a lot of different agencies. So I'm excited for our CIO to come on board. I'm excited for the Bloomberg program, and I'm excited what the future of Newport News has in store. I want to thank everyone on council for all the calls this week, for all the support. I know we, behind closed doors, we could argue, but it, it, it warms my heart that everyone can come together, we can get support, Mr. Archer, and we, we do support you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I can, Ms. Lilly Robinson, I'm going to come talk to you right after that, but if there's no further questions, is she still here? Don't worry, I'll find her.